I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. And I'd like to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I'd like to move to the approval of the minutes for Tuesday, August 27th meeting. Does anyone have any amendments, questions, comments, corrections to those minutes? No one? Okay. Could I have a motion to...
Sandy Ray.
Sandy? Oh, no, you weren't there.
Both around.
Yeah.
This is Chris. I'll second the motion.
There you go.
Even though I read it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're going to move on to old business. And our oldest business is Bron's Boundary. If you would like to come forward and give us an update on where you are.
Hello, my name is Brody Smith. I'm an attorney at Bond. My client's here, Charlie Brewer, and Steve is the engineer at EGR. We wanted to give you an update as of our... Just by way of review, this project's been to your board a few times in combination with the ZBA and the Town Board. And you may recall that from the original conception of the layout, there's a big redesign, which we got feedback from... From positive feedback, I think, a couple of meetings ago about the new configuration of the buildings and the driveways in the parking lot. At that point, we needed to pause because the applicant needed to go through a process with the Army Corps of Engineers to get a delineation and hopefully a determination concerning what areas of that property would be restricted from development due to the presence of wetlands. They went through that process, and on September 18th, they got a determination from the Army Corps of Engineers delineating the portions of the property that are considered wetlands under the federal regulations. It was about 0.7 acres of the property. The good news is, is that area is almost entirely in... Within areas of the property in the last layout that we presented to you that were already set aside to be green areas. So the only difference would be, instead of landscaped areas, some of those areas would just have natural vegetation. So, all good news. At this point, we do not need to make any modifications to the location of any impermeable surfaces like parking lots or roads. We do not need to make any modifications to the footprints of any of the buildings. So we are pleased to report that we're ready to go forward. Our ask would be that from, you know, this point, we can start moving with the cooperation of your engineer and attorney, start moving through the seeker process, and perhaps schedule a public hearing so we can advance this application. So we'll stop there. If you have any questions, we have to answer them.
Do you have any questions about that?
Just one. Just, I'm trying to like picture the site map from straight on, but where would this 0.7 acres kind of lay within that?
Yeah, it's a very odd shape, but the... You may recall on the northern edge of the map, there's a vegetated buffer that's set out between the neighborhood and the proposed driveways and parking lots. So a lot of it's in there. A narrow strip, there's sort of, if you go on the property, there's like a little bit of a creek. That dips down into what was going to be a sort of a lawn in the middle of the area. Kind of looked like a quad in the college or something. So now that'll probably be more like a feature, you know, in terms of there being, you know, water will be preserved there, wet area will be preserved there. Rather than being a lawn, it'll be a water feature, but not substantially different in terms of planning.
Okay. Thanks. I was curious.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, is there, up along 31, is there any changes in the parcels that are under your control, or is that still how it was last when you came?
So the commercial portion you're talking about on the...
Just has to be a little applied.
Yeah. So the plan right now is to not proceed with that piece. We don't have all of it under control, and we don't want it to be extraction or a hindrance to the overall development.
Did you have a goal of when you might be ready for the public hearing?
Yeah. Because there are no substantial changes required to the design, we would be ready and anxious, if possible, to do it at your next available meeting.
So, we certainly could call for a public hearing. It's probably time to get some public input. And the public hearing can always be kept open. There are a number of engineering issues that are still outstanding, primarily engineering. So Greg, do you want to speak to that?
There's still the question about the traffic study days that were done. They are legally allowed by New York State DOT, but with the close proximity of school, I think everybody has some concerns about the timing of it. One moves the Thursday before Good Friday, and the other moves the Saturday between Good Friday and Sunday.
Right. So Easter.
Easter Sunday. Also, we have not seen anything on drainage. And although we have... We've got the long form EAF, it's not going to be complete enough to really assess drainage, water usage, that sort of stuff. So from a standpoint, I think a little further progression definitely needs to be done before the board could maybe even hear full comments.
Board decision, right? Heard from Greg. We only meet once a month.
Right.
So, you know, insofar... You know, it'll be, it's October, right? If we want to get things going, it may raise more questions than answers, or it might focus things. How soon before you might get something on the drainage and various issues that Greg suggested?
So planning has begun. The... I think we could put in information... The plan will include the underground storage of stormwater in the event of a large event. And so, you know, we can provide drawings to that in short order. You know, if a public hearing, for example, was scheduled for a month from now, the notices would need to go out 10 days before. We could commit to have, you know, that information in your hands well ahead of that. Is that accurate?
That would be a lot more than that.
That we could provide some additional drawings?
Not to say that...
Yeah, it'll be preliminary.
You know, I mean, a drainage report would need to be in place, I think, way before, you know, you guys can vote.
Well, can vote, yeah, can vote, but as far as like starting up the, you know, the process to get people in for their comments? Or do you think we need to wait one additional meeting, which would make it November?
Well, that's kind of where we're thinking about, I mean, a schedule would be good to figure out.
So I think what we can do, board, is move toward the seeker, right? Which is, you know, the drainage and the environmental issues. And move toward that. Then there's several more steps. It still has to go back to village board. So, but, you know, try to get that first part of the show done as far as seeker is concerned. And the planning board can be lead agency on that. We don't... You know, public hearing is not required for seeker. So we can move forward, but if you want public input, which I think you should have, I think I would get started with a public hearing and keep it open. And/or close it, get more information, and republish either before or after the seeker determination, because the seeker determination can stand on its own.
Okay, so you're saying, schedule the public hearing.
It's your option. I'm not saying do it, but...
No, your timeline suggestion. Table it till we have more information, and then reopen it after we review it.
Well, not table. It would... One or two things has to have... Either it's going to be closed, or it's going to continue being open. I don't know that the board wants to keep, you know, public comment open for a long period of time, but even a couple of meetings is not going to kill anybody to keep public comment open. It would be a public hearing on site plan and seeker, though it's not required for seeker. And it can be, if we determine to move forward with seeker, we can do another public hearing on site plan. That's totally within the discretion of this board. Like this, I don't see this process finishing up in a two or three months. I think it's going to be longer than that, but part of it, we may be able to get done.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be nice if we could do seeker. I agree with everything that Stephen said. It'd be nice for our process, because there's lots of pieces to this. You know, we have a shower piece and, you know, a few different threads. If we could get the seeker well on its way done in the next couple of months, I think that would be helpful, knowing that you'll have a longer process that'll go to the Town Board and come back, and we understand that. But at least to be able to get through seeker would be very beneficial for us to move this project forward.
And to understand to get through seeker, Greg has to be at least 90% satisfied with what's gone through, if not 99. And, you know, there's like traffic.
Major issues and the methods are going to be... They're going to need to be implemented to solve those issues. And drainage is one of them that is a big concern, because it may very well impact those site layout.
Right.
Traffic is another one, I think they've got to at least supplement it. They were using the wrong classification for low-rise and high-rise apartments. Not a huge difference, but that... So stuff like that needs to be cleaned up in that traffic. And my thought is, I want to talk to Gordon. I mean, there's the days of the traffic. I don't know that it's necessary to redo the entire traffic study, but I think some supplemental counts at key intersections to see just how, you know, how that varies would be important.
Okay.
A full drainage report would be, I think, necessary before you could really assess how it's going to impact your site, you know, the site that you're looking at.
And do you have any idea how long it would take to get the information that Greg is asking for and allow him to look at it? Do you have any idea? I know it's...
Yeah.
It was at a certain point.
And we understand in full reports before you can, you know, do your final approvals. And, you know, it's not uncommon in this process, right, to start with preliminary reports and get a reaction. We can definitely have preliminary reports in Greg's hand well before the public hearing. So that, I think, would give us something to talk about for the public to react to, referrals, and get advanced of all.
Okay. So I think we probably want to move ahead to the seeker, for sure.
So we would want to have a motion tonight then, Terry, to declare a lead agency as a type 1 action.
So does... You want me to just say?
Well, someone has to make a motion.
Well, sometimes I make it up and then somebody agrees or disagrees with it, but anybody want to do that? Michelle repeat it.
Sure. Yes.
Yeah, so we need a motion to declare the planning board lead agency for seeker and to note that this is a type 1 action.
I'd like to make that motion.
You can go with she said. And anybody want a second? Okay. Kevin?
Heard the recorder, yeah, Kevin.
Okay. For?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously approved, Michelle.
Michelle, would you descend this to county as well, so you and I can work on that? What do we have to send to county right now?
We have part 1 of the EAF, and we have site plans, so we'll provide you with all that.
Okay, can you... They like to move electronically now, so can you send them to both Coates' office and myself?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. And now the discussion about the public hearing.
Right, we're gonna ready, thank you.
I mean, I think traffic, I know traffic will be a big discussion item, so we want to have as much clarity as we can for that point. I think drainage equally important, but people think about, they talk about the village traffic all the time.
Right.
So as much as we have, really, maybe, you know, how did you pull this information? When did you pull this information? They're going to house fire, so I think we have to be ready for that to be buckled up as much as we can and ready.
Yeah. So do you think you'll have a supplement of the traffic by public hearing?
I guess I wasn't aware there was still an issue if it's allowed... When he took the traffic counts, he wants us to provide more traffic counts on different dates at that one hearing?
I think, if you'd like, have Gordon call me. I think, I mean, there's like nine intersections counted. I think counting a few of the key intersections, and I'm not even worried about Saturday. I'm more worried about weekday. The key intersections where the school traffic impacts them would be ideal. I know Gordon said he counted, he compared them, and they were only about 10% off or something like that, but those were DOT long-term counts, which don't really count movements. They count just the block. The movements, I think, are what's really important during the school traffic.
Okay, I'll put you on the email, and we'll get on the phone.
Yeah, so just so it's clear, we have a full traffic impact study. Gordon stands, we did it, he's the main guy. You know, I think everybody accepts that as, you know, the person you want doing this. And we'll make him available to work with Greg, and, you know, we'll make sure that the two of them get together and it's supplemented to his satisfaction. But there's a full TIS that people can react to, for good or bad, you know, at a public hearing. And, you know, as we get input from the village engineer and the public, then, yep, we'll supplement it as necessary. But just so you know, there's a full, complete traffic impact study.
I think we got a copy of that, didn't we?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Well, and with the other project, we got two very different takeaways from it, though. You know, what your takeaway, you know, and when he was here and presented it, and the takeaway from the other developer, I mean, it was like night-day difference in their takeaways. So it'd be interesting to have a little more clarification, even to within that realm.
Our intention is that for it counted.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, and that's what you guys had him here last time, and he was very forthright, you know. So it'd be good just to kind of clarify, because especially mechanic, that's where every bus hits. Every bus. Every bus per three out of the schools, you know, your high school, your middle school, and one of the elementary, all go through that light.
Yes.
So that's a, you know, to have that during the school, you would be, I would imagine, a little bit different than the counts that he may be expecting, so.
Just a thought from a public hearing perspective, given that the public hearing would be on the site plan, you know, my thoughts are, the sooner we can have people give feedback, the better we want to do that. But then, thinking about some of the considerations for drainage water and how that could potentially impact the site plan, makes me think, yeah, it'd be better to have a full understanding of what would the site plan actually look like before we have people comment, because I wouldn't want people to feel like they were able to share, and then things were changing after they had their chance to speak.
Or they missed ladder or something.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that would make more sense to kind of follow through in that order.
So how do we figure out when you'll have all that information together and we can schedule the public hearing?
Our preference would be...
10 days ahead.
Yeah, because you only meet once a month, and we're confident that we'll have that information and well ahead of the public hearing. Our ask would be that you vote to have a public hearing now, and that we commit to a date chosen by your engineer to have that stuff in his hand. And if, honestly, if for some reason we're unable to do that, you can just cancel the public hearing. Well, ahead of time, you'll know, long ahead of time.
Do you think by then you'll be able to have the drainage issues resolved and...
I think we'll have preliminary...
What any modifications might need to be?
So there will be no modifications to the layout, but we will be able to have preliminary information about the engineered solutions to, in Greg's hand, well ahead of the meeting. Confident.
Wetlands versus green space or features, lots of features.
Yeah, and there'll be engineered infrastructure, underground infrastructure that will hold stormwater. That'll be, you know, important. And so that's our intention.
And Greg will want to know that, specifically.
Right, of course, yeah.
Okay.
So if I can just ask similarly to having Gordon reach out directly to Greg, if he can do that as well, our engineers, to discuss the drainage report and that information, that would be very helpful.
It'll be helpful to expedite. Expedite and also, you know, find out exactly what he needs and how you need to respond.
That will help us.
Seems more expedient to me.
Terry, I'm the other for the public meeting. We're coming up on two big holidays, so we got to watch. I have a lot of people who say, "Well, you picked a day before the holiday to have, a week before to have your public meeting, and I'm out of town." You know, we're coming up on Thanksgiving and Christmas, right near when you might have them.
True.
True. So if we don't do it in October, November's close to the holidays, or December, people are going to say, "Well, you picked it right there, and now we can't come."
I think that's...
So I don't know if that makes a difference.
I think starting to get the public input, I think that would be my recommendation.
Yeah. Earlier, earlier, and later.
And if the applicant isn't ready, and they can't answer questions, then that's going to be a problem for them. So it's up to them to be ready.
I would agree. Okay. Somebody want to make a motion to schedule the public hearing for the October planning board meeting on October 22nd? Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll go second.
Kevin?
Kevin.
Chris?
Chris first, Kevin.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously, Michelle. Thank you.
I'd like to use your time. Thank you.
So we're close to holidays, people be like, "Well, you picked that week, I can't come. You picked that, I can't come." Plus, we want to get it.
Well, if we can get our remote going, then people can come.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
That's on the end of my agenda. So next up on our agenda is Boggs Island. Good evening.
So I'm Ben Harold with CHA Consulting here on behalf of the Albury Cheese and the Boggs Island Development. I believe you guys have seen this layout previously. It's changed a little bit from what was initially approved in the PUD. There's now only two buildings, one 24-unit building and one 16-unit building, where there were six previously. And we've also adjusted, or are proposing to adjust the trail easement for this new layout. It's going to create more green space between the trail and the river, a more park-like atmosphere, rather than having the trail pushed up against the river, as previously shown. And it also avoids the flood plain and floodway issues that we had on the site plan previously. It's the same number of units as were the pre... As previously approved in the PUD for this area. The main reason for this shift is just the market demand. With a three-story building, it'll have an elevator. Previously, we had two-story apartments, and with the increase in seniors who are attracted to the apartments along the river, there's a desire for elevators, and obviously, you're not going to put an elevator in each individual two-story townhome. So I guess I'll open it to the board for any questions.
Can you just reuse a little bit what's the previous plan? So we have some new board members that work here at the time of the original project?
Yeah, I got to check out.
Just so that they're up to date on that. And what's the difference in your nomenclature of apartment homes versus townhomes?
They're really the same. They're not subdivided for rental only. So they could not sell.
They couldn't sell them later.
I must say condos, I'd say. Yeah, they'd have to go to general.
Where? I guess they'd have to. Yeah, we'll get that after.
So previously, as you can see, there were six buildings, all designed, all this one's labeled townhomes, but it was going to act as an apartment home as well in the past. So I guess it's pretty self-explanatory. There's the six units. You can see it's a lot closer to the river here, and there's a lot less space between the buildings in the previous concept, as we have currently. Previously, total space between buildings, so if you were driving along the road and able to see the river, there was only 140 feet, and now it's 240 feet of clear space between the structures for additional views of the river from the street. You can also see that the trail was much closer to the river, so there's a lot less recreational space for residents and for village residents as well.
So I don't want to put your discussion about how close the trail was to the units, and if it was made it less private to have public blocking there, has that thought process changed?
So that was more for the single-family homes, where they individually owned the apartments. That's not as much of a concern.
You're not worried about that?
So there would continue to be public sidewalk?
Yeah. Yeah. That's part of the PDD. So then, that was my question to you.
Oh, this definitely is a change to the PDD. It would definitely have to go to the village board to change the PDD.
I mean, I guess a question for me, I had a couple of motions last time. We were here from James back in July. I had this thing called substantially conforming with the original PDD, and I guess that reflects a determinant of it, because there are some pretty significant changes. The total units are the same, I see, we went from 22 apartment homes, and that became 24 apartments.
Right.
No more townhomes at all, no apartment homes. Some of its terminology, something that I think is probably actual change, you know, so does that warrant a public hearing now to get additional feedback? Because if we determine that it's a substantial change, do we want to make sure that we have people involved in providing that feedback? Because they have to go back through CICRA. I know, just in reviewing some of the village board meetings in June, there was a discussion about having a public hearing in the village board meetings. I don't know if those hearings occurred.
Right, so I'm not sure what we're being asked for tonight, but if this is generally, you know, considered that the PDD can change, it's going to have to come back here for site plan review, no matter what. You know, make sure that Greg's looking at all of the engineering, the architecturals, and so forth. I don't think there's any question, but that it's a change to the PDD. I don't think it would warrant, you know, future or full seeker, but it does need a revision at the village board. So...
Yeah, they still have a slip open. We haven't gotten into the drainage or anything like that yet. I thought they brought in architecturals for the three-story building.
Phew, you're testing my memory now.
Yes, we did. I think that was the last time.
I don't know if they brought in for the townhouse, and I'm not sure if they want to see those.
Yeah, we would. We certainly would.
So, okay. So there's that, and then the landscaping. I know that the village board is going to have, at least want to see the trail, or, you know, the change in the trail.
Yep.
Because they're very particular about that. And then other than that, I mean, I should look at lighting and those sort of things. I mean, there's a little bit, there's significant changes. I don't see a major engineering change as far as like stormwater and store and that sort of stuff. There's some sort of going to be, I imagine it's in and that's got to come back out, relocated, but that looks pretty straightforward. So I mean, I don't see, I don't see any major issues there. I don't think there's a... a significant increase in purview there. If anything, maybe a little less.
Yeah, that is a reduction.
Yeah, so I mean, if we can work out on those things.
We'd also want to see a landscaping plan.
There is one in the package, just while it's photo-metrix is running right here.
What else do you think we need from them?
I can see it in the...
C64.
I think we should work out all the details, send that to the village board as a full package, so they can work out what they need. And they can have the culture in there.
Sorry.
Terry?
Yeah, sorry.
I'm just kind of talking to everybody. You need to talk to everyone. I think we should have the full package ready and say, "Hey, this, this is all, this is ready to go as a package. It's a change, no question. But we've laid it out, we think it's good. Send it to village board, let them do their public hearing."
Okay.
On that modification.
On the modification.
And then accept it and have it 100% ready.
Ready for that.
I think when I first, I said, "Well, we'll send it there, then we'll send it back." I don't think that's a good idea.
Okay.
On the second call.
So I think the only thing that you've listed that we don't have is the elevations of the townhomes.
I see a lot in there. I just got this yesterday.
I know.
Yeah, it looks like the utility plans and profiles, photo-metrics.
What was the landscaping plan in the original? I think it looked different than this.
The planning board. I think, I think.
So the landscape plan is changed from the original?
Yeah. I thought it was. It was old cable.
There was a lot of it.
I was gonna say, I'm gonna be seeing that.
I looked that up.
Yeah. I mean, it's, I mean, I think, so what else does the board want to see? Like the architectural?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll, we'll review this and try to work everything out over maybe for next meeting, any questions?
Elevations, we already have. You can see built, the chemicals at Timberbanks. It's the same townhome, there's a lot of apartments right there.
Yeah, that's right. As James came here, he presented that one. Same as Timberbanks.
Okay.
I've got a copy in the trunk.
I, I have. I think I have one.
I guess the, the question is, is everyone kind of like, in the, like saying, "This is, this is gonna be okay. This is good." And then Greg can deliver comments and then we'll come back to the next step.
So from my opinion, I'm not totally on board with this, just personally. I like the modulation and the variation in the types of housing in the original. That said, I hear what you're saying about, you know, marketability and so forth, and empty buildings aren't any good either. But I'm not as fond of this as the original plan, because it was much more interesting. It wasn't just an apartment building. No offense to your design.
Okay.
But I like the modulation in the townhomes and the apartment homes and the, you know, it looked more like a neighborhood.
Well, it broke up and you could see the river at every, you know, glance, you know, because you'd hit spaces where you see through, which is, I mean...
So this new building is only 22 feet longer than this building, so there is a lot more area where you can see.
Wider area.
With this new layout. You can see a lot less of the river if you run forward with this layout.
Ben, do you want those drawn?
I have.
You got, I know they're both.
Oh, just a shelf?
Yeah.
I have.
Yeah.
I guess if you want to see the old building, it's...
Then you'd be great.
There's one more.
Yeah, so much more interesting facade.
If we update a facade on the new building, would that help influence?
I guess I'm not sure how you'd make an apartment building look like that, but go for it.
We had talked to you, we talked to you, what we can include.
But you see what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's really...
It's a very different feel for the neighborhood. And that's, that's my objection, but I'm one person.
No, I was gonna say, just to clarify it. So I feel like when we heard from James last time, when he was talking about the floodplain influencing the new site plan. So is it the shift in market demands or is it the floodplain and the river?
It's a combination of both. Because with the floodplain, you're probably gonna lose the two buildings that were previously shown here. Those two buildings are probably gonna have to be bought with the old layout. So you're losing...
So you're trying to make up the counts from those two buildings in the apartment building?
We're trying to maintain the unit count while still providing a site that meets market demand and avoids floodplains and floodways.
Yes?
Next question. Would this go, will it go back to our good architectural review board too? Or is that gonna weigh on us?
It should.
Okay. Because that's gonna, like I said, they're gonna want to see it architecturally something better, different.
I think I meant that liaison.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, you are. When you can't go, I'm supposed to.
Yeah.
So that's gonna go two places before it gets back here?
Yes. Well, no. We have to, they'll have to come back here with all the information. And then I honestly, would we send it to our architectural review board for, before we send it to the village board?
Yes.
Yes, for the PDD. So yes, that's correct. Sorry, I had to think through that for a second. So anybody else have any other comments on what you're seeing tonight?
Not necessarily exact on that, but more the timeframe that the village board gave you guys. And because I know this is, project is years and years behind schedule. So what, what, like I guess what timeframe did they give you to have? Because I mean, are they all these changes?
I believe there was a recent timeframe extension, right?
To have it complete by, or under, or started?
To your first completion.
I believe that, that happened a couple months ago.
And I remember, I don't know when, it was probably a year ago, a couple residents who lived across the street from this coming to our meeting to talk about, like, "When will this ever be done?" You know, so like, that's in my mind too. Like, they don't want it to...
And that's mine.
Well, it was the condition of the site.
Yeah.
That was the...
Which they've kept it on for the mowing.
They're actually taking care of their sites on One Hightown Street now too. So it's just nice if my dog isn't going through the jungle. So, but that's, but that's one of the questions I asked, just because this now really kind of opens up a whole nother can of worms and, and delays.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, it, you know, looking out for, obviously, I mean, it's obviously on your, your, you know...
I know.
What's, what's best for you guys, but you know...
They've built so many of these at Timberbanks, and they've built this one at, next to Stewart's in the Town and Clay on Buckley Road. So they already have full design plans for both of these buildings. So as soon as it was approved, they could start going out and moving their, setting foundations and get to work immediately.
Okay. So we're within, probably within that timeframe?
Yes.
For you, that the village board saw? Okay. So do we need to refine the list of what we want them to come back with, Jamie?
I, I think they know. I mean, what do you think?
Well, we listed everything. I just, usually you like us to sum up.
New facade, new...
I don't know. What do you think the summary is? I mean, what do you want, you want to see the architecturals?
Well, we need to see all of the engineering.
Yes.
Items that Greg listed. I think I'd like to see the landscape plan beefed up to match what was in the original. We want to see elevations. What else? The weakness.
Lighting.
Lighting. And you said...
We have a wedding planner.
Are the fixture cuts in there?
It's got a corn fixture, the same as...
The same as we have.
I think that's in the landscape, maybe.
Yeah.
Man, yeah.
I thought there was a photo meter, right?
Yes.
Yeah. I don't think there's...
Nine, nine.
Just the photo meters, you should bring that.
No, I just said, I don't know if it's possible, you know, because I, you know, we own a different utility, but the trash, is that possible to come a little closer building and have the, almost have the path go out and around where it, I mean, because right now, I guess it comes up closer to Tabor Street, you know, sidewalk. But I, I don't know if that's just me being, but I'd almost rather go out and around the trash to walk than...
Yeah. I think there was, our original discussions is that we wanted the walks to line up with the...
Come up straight to?
Yeah, up to the streets, which it doesn't exactly line with Tabor right now either.
So, yeah, whether or not it could come up and around and then...
The walkway or the driveway?
The walkway.
The walkway down here. See how it kind of cuts back into behind, between the building and the trash?
Yeah, I had that, I had that flag to kind of turn the, I guess I don't have a problem that the driveway's a little less than 90 degrees, like 80 degrees. That gives enough room for the trailer to continue going.
So the problem with that is this existing utility pole, which these street poles all tie down into here. So there's really no way to move that or the tie for the utility pole. Otherwise, you're probably gonna have to rerun almost this entire street.
Where's the pole? I'm sorry.
So the utility pole is right in here.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
And normally, if it was just a straight line, it wouldn't be an issue getting National Grade to move it. But because Tabor Street, all of those connect onto that pole, it's pulling up Tabor Street, so you have to have the tie back there. So there's really no way to really move that pole without extensive utility rework.
But you're gonna get closer to it, right?
Closer to...
The pole?
It's pretty close.
I mean, we're like two feet off of it.
No, I mean with the walk, not the driveway.
Oh, yeah, we could pull the walk to the right. We just...
I think that's what he was alluding to.
Yeah, just, yeah.
Not the driveway, it was the walk.
Okay. I thought you meant pull the sidewalk over and shift the driveway. So you just mount the sidewalk pulled over.
Just, yeah, around the trash rather than going between. See how you're now...
The trash closer to the building, he means, and go...
And push the sidewalk.
And slide up to the right of it.
And set up between the trash and the building with the walk.
So I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
The problem is, when you get the trash truck over here...
Yeah.
You're not gonna be able to pull out the dumpster.
Okay. That curve gives you an extra four feet.
Yeah. Because right now, you can pull in, back out, and get the dumpster out. If you're over there with the angle that it would have to be, the trash enclosure is basically the final.
It's probably also safer to keep the walk closer to the building so that you're not crossing the truck traffic too.
Yeah.
No, that's, it was just more, yeah. No, it's good to know.
There are no wrong questions.
No, we tried to reconfigure that multiple times, and there's just unfortunately no way to do that.
Great luck.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it probably actually is safer where it is if the truck's gonna pull in and back, back out.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they want to add as a requirement?
We didn't gain any or lose any parking spaces, did I hear him say?
So...
It was units.
Units. Were the units, well, I know units you didn't lose, but parking spaces?
So parking, we have 53 spaces for these 24 units. So that's all over two to one. And on here, you can fit two cars in each driveway as well as a two-car garage for each unit. So there's really four spaces per unit for these six.
So like bedroom units have those?
These are two to three. I don't know exactly what Joe's gonna build, but I can find out and get an exact answer.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so I think you have the list and...
I'm gonna have you go on through it just to make sure I don't...
That's fine. That's fine.
So engineering plans, which I think we pretty much have. We can give you a detailed drainage report of the impervious calcs compared to what was previously through.
That would be all.
So you can review that. Updated landscaping plan that's beefed up. We'll have Amy Frank go in our office, look at that. Updated architectural elevations, trying to incorporate additional facade elements into this building. And I will, I don't believe you've seen this building. So we'll get that.
No.
And we'll provide the photos of what this building is.
It may have been a long time ago with the concept drawings, but not for...
That's, we'll get updated for these. You want the lighting cut sheet added to the photo-metrics plan. And then I'm gonna get bed counts for this. So you have exact bed counts for the apartment homes.
Is that it?
I'm good.
Think that's nice.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have under new business, 48 Salina Street, zone change application.
Welcome back.
So I'm sure you all...
Did you drop your phones?
I wish. So as, I'm sure most of you are aware where the VFW, or the former VFW is in the village as you're leaving along Salina Street. So the current owner, Gabe Quattrucci, has hired us to go through a zone change. So currently, the VFW is on R1. I'm not sure why, as the VFW has been there as long as I can remember. It's really just to update the zoning and allow a bachi club. Currently, they're located in Phoenix, and they want to relocate. They've outgrown their space in Phoenix that they currently have. So their idea was to take the former VFW, fix it up, and relocate the bachi club there. And as part of it, they require a zone change, because it's not allowed use in R1.
So this is a private club, smoking, alcohol, bachi.
To the New York State code requirements.
So if I can just explain to everyone why we're here. So zone changes are strictly within the purview of the village board. However, as planning board, they refer it here because this is the planning body, right? They want to get, they're, they're the legislative bodies. They're like, "Yep, I, we can do legislation, we can do a zone change." But what's the recommendation of this board? So this is a very weighty recommendation. As long as I've been here, I have not seen any request for a zone change come here, other than the PDD stuff, right? So it's, it's something that is not favored, generally speaking, in the law, but it's something that they can consider legislatively. So as the planning board, you need to say, "Hey, how does this fit with the general plan of the town? How does it fit with the surrounding areas?" And the question is not whether it's a bachi club that's going to go here. The question is, what is any use in the zone that they're requesting, which is B1?
B1.
Any use in B1 can go there. So when bachi doesn't want to be there anymore, we'll, we'll look at the uses, right? And, and I'll pull them up for you. I did have them up, but then they got lost. But it'll take me just a second to pull them up. So we need to think about, the question is, is this appropriate for the business zone? Should this property be business zoned? And this is the recommendation that is being looked for. Like, what else is happening in this area? What's across the street? What's next door? Do you want any of the following uses that I'll pull up? Terry, you can take over from here while I'm looking that up.
So, so my general thought process aligns with Jamie. We had a brief discussion about this. To change the zone, in that circumstances, spot zoning. Because it's surrounded by residential properties. I know where Bron's Foundry is, it was formerly commercial, but it's going to be all residential there. And spot zoning, from a planning standpoint, is never a good idea. You shouldn't do it. On the other hand, I recognize that this is a building that's underutilized and maybe a bocce, indoor bocce venue would be a great use for the building. And I recognize all of those items. My concern is if the owner closes it, sells it, changes, it's not going to be bocce. Instead it's going to be a bar or.
Or one of the following.
Dollar, Dollar General wants to come in and buy the property. It's like, we need to think forward, not just for this. As much as I think it's a great use for the building, I'll admit I am torn. But I go back to my planning that tells me this is a bad idea. So Jamie, you can read the list, but then I had another idea that I.
So retail stores, shops, banks, business offices, personal service establishment, including corner operated laundress, restaurants, excluding drive-in restaurants, mortuaries, undertaking establishments, hotels, motels, theaters, and recreation establishments. Um, so this would be a recreation establishment. But any of those other things could go here. Maybe not this year, maybe next year, maybe in five years, maybe never. But the other thing I, I'm wondering about is there's, there's vacant land surrounding this.
There is now where the landfill was the.
Well, it's sort of right next to it.
Right next to it.
Right next to it.
Further, I think.
Yeah, at the end of the street.
So. Owned by Reiman Properties. I did look it up on the tax parcels as well. I don't know who that is. So if this gets a zone change, it'll be like, great, now it's business zoned. How about we get business zoned?
Properties owned are once, right, they're close to the river, yeah.
You know, and it is near the river and it's near, well, this lovely development that we're seeing that they're trying to put residentially. So.
And I, at one point we spoke briefly of, which we didn't follow through on yet, but that's going to be in part of our ongoing planning is considering some of the areas that are now business, zone business in a residential area that are spot zoned, making some sort of a recommendation so that when they were no longer being used, it reverts to R1 and cannot be maintained as business. And that's, that's actually, there's a caveat for that. I read about that, that there are some properties that it automatically reverts to R1. And so that's something that we talked about for a couple of other properties as we're looking at making our entrance to Baldwinsville, you know, residential and welcoming. Remember there was, there's the property, it was the state firm. Yeah, that's, that's exactly what I'm talking about.
Right. So at some point in time, someone thought, oh, we'll just zone this, you know, business.
No.
You know, that, that's, that's the type, like, well, it's great because it's just, it's, it's just Joe Smith and he's the neighbor and he wants to do a state farm business. And next thing you know, Dollar General's in. You know, you know, so that's, that's what this board should look at, in, in my opinion.
You know, in that area, we have doughboys and, you know, no one wants them to leave. We just want to not have an undesirable business come there later. So that's, we need to talk to the zoning board about those recommendations. But I wondered, and I briefly brought this to Jamie on the way in, about getting a use variance for it. Instead of rezoning it, getting a use variance so that the bocce club could actually be there.
We can certainly explore that route. Typically, in our profession, when you hear the term use variance, everyone avoids it like the plague because it's very difficult to justify and very easy to challenge.
So, um, I, I will say this, it is difficult. You have to bring in dollars and cents proof. You have to prove it can't be used for any residential use. The, the thing that would make this different, for example, than, than property next door is, like, there's existing buildings here that are truly commercial in nature. And in a use variance, it can be specific. It can be like, you can have your bocce club, but. And by the way, if that were the case, the bocce club might be like, I'm not going to buy this or, because I'm never going to be able to sell it for anything except for a bocce club, because it's a very, it would be very specific to recreational.
If, if you have a, a use variance for a specific thing, bocce club, whatever. And then he chooses to turn it into something else or sell it to someone else, can you request a modification to the use variance?
It would be a brand new use variance.
A new use variance, okay. Instead of a modification.
Right. And I totally hear what you're saying. I know I, I do zoning boards all the time. I'm like, yep, use variance, go away. Every so often, you see something that, that might work. It is costly. You have to get appraisers. You have to have dollars and cents proof. That's what a use variance requires. You have to show that you can't do anything with this property that's allowed under the residential. Each and every use that could be under the residential, you can't do. And it's, it's already, I mean, you're not going to have a single family dwelling on this, you know, unless you tear down the building. So like, but you have to show them, someone, your appraiser has to, has to, the burden of proof is there. It, it's hard to do, but you know, hire Brody Smith, he'll be able to do. You know, you know what I'm saying?
You know, I mean, others than the, the proving, the financial side of it, which I understand is a.
It's a, it's a burden.
It would seem like it would fly, you know? I think anybody.
It's not, I, I will tell you, I, if I thought it wasn't even feasible at all, I wouldn't even go along.
You wouldn't even listen to me.
I, I would have been like, no, don't even try. I could think of ways that it can be done. Maybe. But you have to spend the money for it, right? And that's a hard thing. And I don't know what the bocce club would be willing to do. But I, I think because people like the bocce club, it, it doesn't seem like a very good reason to recommend a zone change of this magnitude.
Right, that's my.
Like if it was R1 and we want to make it out too, you know, that's.
Right, but the spot zone is short sighted. As much as I'd like to see the building being used and.
And the area cleaned up.
And, yeah, I mean, all of it, but I feel like I have to look out for our village.
So the idea to rezone it came from the meetings with the mayor and that was his recommendation. So.
And that, but that's why it's here. I get it, maybe, you know, he's.
Well, that's his job.
That's the legislative, right? That's the legislative body.
Yeah, send it to us.
And this doesn't equal now, it's a recommendation, they would move ultimately, but.
But to your point, it's forward thinking. You have to think of forward thinking really is the key, forward thinking.
Because somewhere, some of this was muddied in the past and it's our job to help cover clarity to things moving forward.
When we do our new comprehensive plan, that would be part of not changing. If we were at that point, we would say, we wouldn't change that.
I think the grants are.
But we don't necessarily have the ability to change it anyway, so.
No, but it's a, it's a tool.
Yeah.
Um, so Jamie, do you?
Does anyone feel?
Does anyone want to talk besides Terry, so that you're.
I mean, so I'll say this, I looked at the B1 zone and I read exactly what you just read to us, Jamie. And I had the same thought, well, bocce, alt, bocce today, 15 years, what is it? Then I thought of the same state farm building. We just went through this and want to kind of learn from that experience. So that made me very hesitant to think about this shifting from what it currently is to what it would be shifting to because of, but the downstream impact would be yours.
Agreed.
Can we?
No, that's.
That would be great.
So can we?
Well, I, I guess, I mean, there's no reason to delay it other than to do a better resolution than what we might be doing on the fly right now. But we can get some bullet points and, and send it to the mayor and, and I would say that, that this board does not recommend a zone change, right?
Yeah.
As the planning arm of the village, you know, the, the long-term.
Do you want to type up something and?
Well, it would have to be delivered at the next meeting.
It's impossible, long-term, the end of the zone change and lots of wide variety of uses that are not palpable to the planning board.
Deliver that at the next.
Village.
Village.
Well, no, if, if we want to, if we want to work on a resolution that's, that's quite comprehensive, then we would have to make the resolution at the next meeting, our next meeting.
Okay.
And let the.
So get the information collected, bulleted, written.
Right. So I would say that the, perhaps the motion this evening is a, a zone change is not going to be recommended by this board. And we're, we're, we're going to table it till the next meeting to comprehensively explain the position of this board.
Okay, to the vote.
Yes.
Okay. Who wants to make that motion?
Sandy.
Sandy.
I'll second that motion.
Chris?
Chris, second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved unanimously, Michelle. Thank you. So I had a couple of other small items of business. One of which is Suzanne is resigned from the board for personal reasons. Roseanne, I said it. And then we need to find someone who's willing to be a new board member and recommend them. And can I remind you that we're still down an alternate? So we, you know, we have a lot of business before us and if there aren't at least four of us here, we don't have a quorum and we can't do any. So we need to really think about that. The qualifications aren't, you know, living in the village is the, the main one. It obviously experienced with any sort of planning, zoning, architecture, landscape, engineering, anything, you know, helps with qualifications to understand what we're doing. But we do need to find some people. I can also check with the mayor and see if he has any recommendations too. But put your feelers out there because we definitely need somebody. Um, the other thing that I had was, since we might be having issues with having quorum or having enough people with holidays and so forth coming up. Can we, Jamie, legally conduct business via a Zoom meeting?
I have to relook at that, but the, the answer is, there has to, the person's face has to be shown.
Yeah.
And I think they have to be out of town on business, I'm pretty sure, out of town on business.
Okay.
Board member. I, I have to, I haven't looked at that in a while, so let me look at it.
I'm just thinking now, for instance, if we had a Zoom auction this evening, if Joanna felt well, she could have participated. But she has COVID, so she can't come here.
I'll look at that. Yep. I just looked at it recently and I truly cannot remember the answer right now, maybe because.
And, and we don't currently have that option, Michelle. We used to. Where'd it go?
I'll, I'll ask again.
Okay. I'm just thinking as we're short on, on members and as COVID is more vigilant again, that maybe we should be prepared for an eventuality because we do have a lot of business in front of us.
Now Thanksgiving week, I will not be here.
Oh, see, there we go.
Well, he can.
I have people at the COVID forum.
But also, I mean, if he was, if, if it wasn't that he was summoning himself in Tahiti, then he could, he, he can come on. He can come, come on Zoom, right?
Yeah.
I can come on Zoom.
Yes.
Just, it's word wise, right?
Yes. Yes, I mean.
Don't, don't always kind of mean change me for me. Somebody will be here in my office and stuff.
Okay.
Or I can be on Zoom, that's fine too.
When I'm gone, there's no one to cover for me. That's Ben Chris.
Your special.
Andrew. So anyway, that's just been on my mind because I'm, I'm concerned because of the resignation and, you know, we need to conduct business here. So.
Man, that's a tricky week, so you don't get, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the other one's right by Christmas too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Sometimes we move it too. Should have looked at that. Would Jody have that information? Who would have the information on how to?
Like how clerking, you know.
Set up a Zoom. I mean, we have a TV monitor. You have a laptop right now.
The CBA tried to do that and there was an issue, so.
What kind of issue?
There was no way to do a Zoom. So I'll get clarification and I'll get back to you.
Yeah, because maybe somebody can help figure it out. It just seems like it would be a viable option for us. I mean, you basically just need to plug a laptop into the TV, right?
Is there like a general use? Yeah, I don't know if there's a general use that we could use or, to your point, or something.
Um, yeah, I think there's a.
We had camera laptop, that's pretty much it.
Yeah.
Cameras are not, even if they're not, but you know, they're going to protect your.
I can come in and test too, and that helps because I do know a time, I can be your person, that helps. I'm local.
That's.
Yeah. So if that helps.
Yeah, I think it's more people.
Yeah.
That'd be great, Sandy, if you don't mind helping with that. I spend virtually most of my day on Zoom routines. Okay, with that, I believe we can close the meeting at 8:07. I have a motion to close the meeting.
Andrew.
Andrew, second.
Sandy, break.
Sandy. All approve?
Aye.
Motion carried, unanimous.